It is Tuesday, November 19th, 7:01 PM. This is the regular meeting of the full city council and the clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy and Bledy?
Here.
Acasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city council.
Alrighty, so we are being recorded right now on Zoom. We are being livestreamed on the city's website and we're being broadcasted on Hoyoke Public Access on Channel 15. This meeting is also being translated in Spanish, so thank you to everyone this evening. And the first person polled this evening to vote was Councilor Anderson Burgos. Sorry to disappoint you. So first up, we do not have any public hearings. Is there anyone here this evening for public comment? Come on down and just state your name and address into the record and you'll have two minutes. I'll be timing and... I know, I brought it home so that we can figure out really how to make the most of it because I just feel like maybe I should have bought a different one. So I'll time and I'll give you a 30-second warning, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Don Sanders, Victory Theater Project, 8189 Suffolk Street, Hollyoke. I'm really happy, I just wanted to come by this evening because I always like to come in person and tell everybody how well this project is going. It's a very important project. I know that on October 1st, David Weinberg spoke and gave some misrepresentations of what's happened in the project and I just want to say that we have answered those in a report that we're going to respectfully submit for you to read. And I encourage David and anyone else who has questions about the project to come to us, come directly. Our doors are open. We're always actually kind of enjoy talking to people and explaining any kind of complications that have in this project because it is a complicated project. And I think people always come away kind of astonished at the complication and as astonished as I am how well it's going. And having said that, I'm very excited today, totally out of the blue, not totally out of the blue, we've just gotten tremendous news about a challenge donor and you'll be hearing more about that over the next couple of weeks, just in time for Thanksgiving and the holidays. So I want to wish you all very, very happy Thanksgiving and very happy holidays and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I don't, I think, I guess, I guess we had these over. And I hope you enjoy this reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else either in person or on Zoom? Step on up and again, just your name and address and I'll keep track of time for you.
Very good. Yes, my name is Richard Peck. I'm from 269 Rogers Avenue in West Springfield, Mass. And I'm here to speak up for someone who grew up-
Madam Chair, can we just make a motion to allow people not from Hoyoke to speak to us tonight for a lot of two minutes?
Is there a motion that's been made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay.
Thank you very much and we thank the council for letting us speak. I wanted to speak up for someone who grew up at 269 Walnut Street in Hoyoke, namely Dr. William R. Peck, after whom a middle school was named in this community for many, many years. I know that a replacement of that building is under construction right now and I would just urge the council and the city to consider renaming the building after him. He was a towering figure in the history of Hoyoke Public Schools. He served this city for 43 years as the superintendent. He was, like many people who come from Hoyoke, the first in his family to ever attend college. But his intelligence was so obvious to so many people that he was made superintendent and chosen to run the Hoyoke Public Schools when he was only in his twenties. And he served the city for a great many years, was a progressive leader for his day. And just that he would be a wonderful example for the students of, the future students of the city of Hoyoke to emulate. And so for that reason, I would hope that you continue to name the new building after him or at least find some way to commemorate his legacy because again, he's a wonderful example for future students from Hoyoke to emulate for the reasons I've mentioned and for many others. So thank you very much, the council, and we appreciate you allowing us to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Devine, we don't usually do like a back and forth.
I'm just asking him not to leave.
Okay.
If we could take up item number 32 while Mr. Peck is here. I didn't know he was going to be here.
Second.
I think that would be an interesting item to take up.
Okay, the motion was made- Second. And seconded to take up, suspend the rules and go out of order to take up, oh, that was a timer, sorry, take up item 32. Counselor, filed by Counselor Devine, item 32 is ordered that the school receiver send the survey results from the naming of the new middle school to the city council.
I can't believe he took them out of the room. Anyways.
Okay, I mean, is this going to go to?
It's, I think it's just-
Receive and adopt?
Yeah, receive and adopt. Okay. Kind of bizarre. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
Is it in our packets? 32?
No, it's just, it's just an order.
Yeah, that's all.
It's just an order.
Okay.
All those in, under discussion? Well, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, so I actually thought there was like some information and stuff.
No, it's just-
So it's perfunctory right now?
Yeah, it's just, it's just asking the-
Just performative?
Just the superintendent to share that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, let's keep going. All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, we'll go back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to receive.
Okay, if there's no one else in the public or on Zoom, and I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom, we're going to the items that are laid on the table. Does anyone have any updates or should we keep everything laid on the table? Three's ready?
Wait, we were on ordinance though?
Nope. So I was just asking, we're on laid on the table and there's three items laid on the table. And I just asked if there were any updates or I would entertain a motion to keep them laid on the table, but I will do what the will of the body says. Council McGrath Smith?
I'm wondering if it makes sense to make a motion for item one to be complied with as we have a series of other items coming up that I think will also invite further, more detailed conversation.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove item one from the table.
Okay, motion's been made and-
Second.
Seconded to remove item one from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, I need a motion.
Just under discussion, I think that-
Well, just make your motions comply.
The motion is that it be complied with.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that it's complied with, under discussion. Anything you want to add?
I just think that we have a number of different items that are coming forward that will just provide more layers of this conversation.
Okay.
Initial one, I think, has happened and we can mark it as complied with.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll take a motion to take up item three.
Oh, no, hold on, hold on.
Oh, my bad. You said anyone else.
No, no, no. Anyone else on discussion on item one?
Go ahead.
Okay. So on the motion that it has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
I'm going to take a motion to take up item three.
Okay. Motion's been made-
Take it off the table.
Yep, motion's been made and seconded to take item three off the table. Under discussion?
Yes, this was an item that we were-
Hold on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then what's the motion?
And then-
That the order be adopted.
What's the motion now?
That the order be adopted.
So let me just read item three.
Go ahead.
Item three is the committee on ordinance to whom is referred an order with community support and in service of our museum goers, order to move handicap space from the corner of Beech and Cabot to about the paved driveway of Wasseriahurst. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, so this was put on the table because last time it was the wrong one and the order got rectified, in a sense, the parking spaces got fixed. So we need to approve and adopt it now so that way they can actually follow through with the changing of the spaces.
So are you saying perhaps you have a motion?
Motion that the order-
Pass the first reading.
Pass the first reading. It's been a little while.
So the-
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Is there any other discussion on that end? Counselor Bartley?
The Warford Council, you're good to go with all this?
Yes, thank you.
You filed it, right? Okay, alright.
I've been following it, thanks.
Thank you.
So the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Motion that, motion that the order be ordained.
Pass it be ordained, yep.
For the passage.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to adopt the order to move the handicap space from Beech and Cabot to about the driveway of Wasseriahurst. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you have adopted the order. Thanks, everyone. Alright, on to communications.
Yes?
Motion that we take number four up tonight. Mrs. Glashine is a longtime member of the Hoyoke Public Schools. Suspend the rules, take it out of order so that we could vote on this tonight. Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take action and vote tonight on item four, so I'll read four. It's a letter appointing Ms. Jackie Glashine of 30 Mount Tom Avenue to serve as a member on the library board of directors. Under, or, under discussion?
Yeah, quickly, Mrs. Glashine has been, certainly has been vetted. She's a longtime Hoyoke resident, longtime member of the Hoyoke Public Schools, administrator in the school system, and she's an excellent choice for this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bartley, is that your hand up?
Yes, I just want to make, so Mrs. Glashine is still employed by HPS, I presume. So it's okay, and I want to follow up, it's okay for her to be an employee of HPS and be at the library because that's a non-paid position. So I just want to make sure we just sort of say this stuff out loud.
Sure.
And then, just relative to the gentleman she's replacing, a complete advocate for the city. Lucky to have him. I believe Mr. Mehdi's still on the fire commission, thankfully. And that is, that's a lot of work, being a, being a fire commissioner. So thank you to Mr. Mehdi.
Thank you. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just curious as to why this one isn't being sent to public service like most of the other ones are, for a first time?
Sure. Counselor Bartley?
Well, it's always been, thank you, Madam President, it's always been my position, if any one counselor wants to go to public service, I always support that. So if the counselor wants that to happen, I think what's happening here is this, Mrs. Glashine is such a well-known individual and she's, you know, champion for all public schools and all that and education and all that, we think she would be a great fit for the library. But if the counselor wants it to go through proper order, I will support the counselor.
Okay. Was that a motion or?
No, I'm not making, it's her motion. She wants it to go there.
Just making sure.
Yeah, good, yeah, okay.
Okay. So, oh, Counselor Jenny Rivera?
So I am in favor of this as Ms. Glashine was my boss when I first became a counselor.
Oh, you worked in it.
And due to all the conflict, I had to leave her. She's an excellent, she's been with the Hoyoke Public Schools for a lot of years. She is great at this and I'm voting yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
First rule?
Okay.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the appointment of Jaclyn Glashine to the library board of directors. This is a roll call vote, no? Okay, just kidding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved with that. Thank you, Ms. Glashine, if you're watching. Alright, item five is the minutes from the October 15th meeting.
You received?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive-
And approve.
And approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, item six is from Attorney Manzieluski, a letter regarding municipal hearings officer.
Receive and send to ordinance, please.
Second.
Receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven is from Attorney Manzieluski, a letter about city council voting specifics.
Receive. Receive and send to charter and rules.
Receive and send to charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight is from Attorney Manzieluski, a letter on the updated stabilization legal opinion.
Receive and send to finance?
Second.
Second.
Made and seconded to receive and send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine is from Attorney Tyler Ingram, a letter requesting enforcement of ordinances at 224 Westfield Road.
I don't know where you send that.
Just look at that a second, Madam President, just want to refresh my memory on it.
Fitzgerald's.
Oh, okay. I guess, wow. What to do with this one, Madam President?
Do you want to receive and send to?
The mayor.
The building, yeah, the mayor, the law department?
Yeah. The planning board is also mentioned in here in this letter too and it looks like-
It's like they got a copy, the building department got a copy, the city solicitor, engineer, and us.
Looks like we're just getting a copy on top of all these other people.
Okay. Do you want to receive?
Receive.
You're, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Counselor Bartley?
I'd like to send it to a committee because it is from an attorney. I just kind of want to understand a little better and discuss it and maybe we can invite him in. So I'll, I'll motion that we send it to ordinance.
Okay. Motion's been made to send to ordinance?
Or DGR, one of the two, either one's fine with me, so, okay.
Ordinance.
Let's send it to DGR.
DGR is fine.
I'll move that we send it to DGR.
Okay. I respect that. Motion's been made and seconded to send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 10 is from Dr. Gloria Caballero Roca, information for second Afro-Caribbean history through the arts festival.
Motion receive.
Motion receive.
Motion receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 11 is a grant completion form for the Mass EMPG grant.
You received?
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam President, can we take 12 and 13 together? And the rules, their meeting minutes?
Sure.
Motion be to, after we do that, to motion be to receive.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up items 12 and 13 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's been made to receive items 12 and 13. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 14 is from the city auditor, the 2025 General Fund and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Motion receive and send to finance.
Send to finance.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 15 is an application for a special permit for a motor vehicle repair garage at 37 Appleton.
Motion send to DGR.
Send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 16 is the renewal for a home occupation permit.
Motion to approve the renewal, pending all the stuff is paid and that the, all the current restrictions are remain in place.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to renew and, yep, everything is approved in the application. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. President's report, I'm not going to forget it this week. Okay, just have a few updates for you guys. So the tax rate meeting, December 2nd. We're going to do it on the day of a full council meeting. We'll do it at 6:00 PM. And, I'm-
December 3rd. December 3rd.
Sorry, did I say the 2nd? I meant the 3rd. My bad. Just testing you all, making sure you're listening to me. So it'll be on the same day as our, our council meeting. It'll be beforehand at 6:00. Hopefully we can, I have faith in us that we can get this done in an hour to start our meeting at 7:00. So stay tuned. You'll obviously get some more information in the coming weeks, but we needed to get that done by December 5th, so. Counselor Jordane?
Did they end up with the final number for the levy and are they going to be sending the sheets around?
They will be sending all of that information to you guys. I had the mayor's finance, monthly finance meeting that I go to and at first I was pushing for this week, optimistically. And the information wasn't, wasn't ready yet.
Okay.
And it didn't look like it would be ready for the 26th next week. So I've been told we'll, we'll have it well before then and I will stay on top of it to make sure that we get what we need.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see, I sent everyone an, or Jeffrey sent everyone an email about a working group that the superintendent receiver is putting together for the MetCaf building, the future of the MetCaf building. I would love to have, they would love to have someone from the council. They've asked me to ask you all. So it's not going to be a long working group. It's probably going to be, like, the goal is to get recommendations out by the end of January. So if someone is able to do that, is that your hand, Counselor Bartley? Thank you, I appreciate it. Great, we'll follow up with Mr. Soto on that. So my other notes, Jeff is still receiving calls about not being able to hear some counselors. You got to speak into the microphone. Pretend you're at karaoke and you need to be heard by your constituents. So when you're over here, even though you can all hear me, no one can hear me. Got it?
Yep.
Do it again. No one can hear me. Can't hear me. You can hear me now, okay? Alright.
Can you hear now?
I will start singing karaoke if I, I need to.
That's okay. I love music.
Counselor Bartley's okay with that?
I love music.
Thank you. Alright, team bonding. Just a reminder that the MMA conference is coming up on Thursday. It starts Thursday, January 23rd through Saturday, January 25th. So make sure you're confirming with Jeff if you do plan to attend by December 6th. There is an email from Jeffrey who has all the details and you can just search for MMA, but reach out to him if you need some help. Also, you should have seen on your desk a page that we all need to sign acknowledging open meeting law guidance. He sent everything out to us via email last week. So once you've signed it, you give that to our madam clerk here and just make sure you're doing that. It's actually, I'm halfway through it. Counselor Rivera?
So this says that I've been trained on open meeting law, if I sign it?
That you've read the document that Jeffrey provided. You're reading and acknowledging that you've reviewed the open meeting law guidance that was from the AG's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, the tree lighting, just fun stuff. Reminder, that's on December 7th. Like, there's going to be lots of fun things, ornament decorating, free rides, balloon artists. That all starts 3:00 PM at the merry-go-round. And then the, all the fun at city hall starts at 5:00 and then the tree lighting and the parade is around 6:00. So be there, be square. Should be a great time. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thankful for-
Feliz Navidad. Feliz Navidad.
City government and I'm thankful for that 10:00 PM rule. Alright, reports of committees. Is there anything else anyone needs to add before we keep going? Okay. So reports of committees. Item number 17 is the committee on ordinance to whom is referred an order that the city council review and adopt the mayor's proposal for the city's financial policies by ordinance, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Do you want to give an update?
I mean, we had several meetings on this particular item. I kind of don't, I'm going to be honest. Motion to pass the second reading.
Okay, so hold on, before, we haven't even voted on the first reading yet.
Go ahead.
So the motion was made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
I can, I'll wait till second reading.
Do you want to do the second? Okay, sorry. All those in favor?
One, one quick one.
Aye.
Do you want to do, Counselor?
Oh yeah, motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading, under discussion. Counselor Jordane?
Yes, Madam President, and to the chairman, I did have just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I'm very much in favor of this. I appreciate the mayor in concert with the DOR doing a lot of work on this and I really appreciate the good work of the ordinance committee, all five members on this. One, a couple of quick questions. One, did we end up, I know Counselor Bacon, I think, might have been proposing an amendment relative to using the words mayor and CAFO.
Yes.
We did that. And then the other one is, the, I had one insertion. It was in the first version, so hopefully it didn't get changed, was about the, if there's any loss of city property greater than the $500, that that would be, any department had anything, theft, loss, damage-
So to my understanding-
To report to the mayor and the council.
Yeah, no, to my understanding, the only edit that was made to the second version was the capital P stat.
Okay.
Counselor Bacon had requested for an amendment.
Okay.
But if there's anyone from the city solicitors also that could expand on that, please feel free to do so, but to my understanding, that's what we voted on just to make sure.
Okay.
And Counselor Bacon actually asked about that and her hand is raised, so she can-
Okay, great. Counselor Bacon?
Yes, I would just like to confirm that while I didn't review it in its entirety, I did see the attachment and that those edits were made so that it's mayor slash CAFO. And I'm pretty certain it's throughout. I'm hoping the word processor just did the work. Anyway, so I appreciate the edits and the work of the committee and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so that was the motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the mo- That's your motion.
Yeah, motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to adopt the city's financial policies. However, our handy, amazing Jeffrey reminded me that I did not do, the motion to take a roll call vote for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items- Uh, motion that the passage be ordained, um, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to adopt, uh, the city's financial policies, however, our handy, amazing Jeffrey reminded me that I did not do, the motion to take a roll call vote, for the purposes of this meeting, would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rolls unless there is an objection.
Aye, su-, support that, make that motion.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that's, for those watching, it's just 'cause we are hybrid right now, sorry about that, thank you Jeffrey. So, back to the, uh, if, if you do vote yes, you are voting that, um, we adopt the, um, proposal for the city's financial policies by ordinance. Then the clerk will call the roll, sorry. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vagan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Unanimous vote, with that, you've passed it, thanks everyone. Um, item eighteen, may I read an abridged version? Would you like me to read it all?
Second.
So, a motion to, uh, allow this president to give abbreviated readings throughout the meeting.
Okay. Uh, motion's been made and seconded to allow me to do an abridged reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so, item eighteen is, um, the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that the city's ethics ordinance be amended as follows, and there are, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight items and in that ordinance. Um, Counselor Rivera?
Yes, thank you, um, I believe this is an order filed by Counselor Jordane. Um, we spoke on this one a couple times, and we were grateful for him, um, before this one to come in, but this last meeting, he was able to send some communication with some updates. Um, so, we made the updates, the amendments, and then Counselor Bartley added a couple amendments that he ran by you, I believe, Counselor Jordane?
Yes.
Um, so, the committee voted on it, uh, passed, uh, adopted it, and recommended that the order be a- adopted as amended, but Counselor Jordane and Counselor Bartley could kind of expand a little bit on the language that they amended, um, with regards to the document, if it's possible.
Sure. Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, uh, th- thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, again, the ordinance committee, fantastic job, um, really appreciate them moving on this, I also wanna thank the Law Department, I had made a suggestion, they went through, they did a very good job, I made just a couple, uh, really housekeeping things, just for emphasis, one is that, um, we're gonna take really kind of an affirmative role to kinda get the word out about the, the new compliance hotline, as you know, the council, with the mayor's support, uh, recently adopted the Ethics and Compliance Hotline, so that it's creating a culture of see something, say something, um, if consi-, if you have concerned citizens, concerned other employees, they can report their concerns, and that this is the, basically, the enabling ordinance that says we're gonna do what we're already doing, uh, that we just started, uh, a couple months ago. So, um, one of them is, you know, we're gonna advertise it, you know, out on a website, we're gonna make it known in the different departments, maybe have flyers, that kinda thing, so people know what the number is. Um, that was the main one, and then the other was, just for emphasis, putting on how we're gonna do our reasonable best to protect the confidentiality of reporters and protect people who do make reports from retaliation. So, um, I thought those were all excellent edits, and I also thank Counselor Bartley for his assistance and his, uh, his edits too, so, this came out phenomenal, uh, really nice job, ordinance committee.
Thank you, Counselor, anyone else? Okay, so...
Motion to pass the first reading?
Motion has been made, oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I...
Counselor Bartley?
I know the chair gets emotional when we don't compliment him, but, so this time I will, because this is a lot of work.
I, I get emotional when you do.
Well, I, you can't win either way, but when, he doesn't, he didn't get a pat in the back, but I think he did a great job, because it's not easy dealing with all this, um, madam chair, 'cause there's a lot of stuff, a lot of moving parts too, and... So, um, so it's not a easy thing to make the sausages, we used to say, we don't, I guess we can't say that anymore, but that's what, that's what this is, that's what this is about, it's, uh, this is making, this is literally making the sausage, and it ain't pretty, but ul-, but ultimately, you get through it and, and you do it, so, there you go.
I didn't know we couldn't say that anymore. Alright, um...
Sausage is still legal, right?
Yeah, yeah, as far as...
I hope so, I think I had some about a week ago. Wait till tomorrow.
Oh my gosh, okay, um, there was a motion, motion to pass the first reading, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion, motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And...
And motion that the passage be ordained.
And motion, that, motion's been made and seconded that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you are voting to, uh, adopt the order as amended. Anderson Burgos?
The sausages are ready, yes.
Bartley?
Uh, yes. You threw me off with that one, what? Oh, I, I hope so.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vagan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you, with that, you've adopted the order. Um, item nineteen is the Committee on Ordinance, uh, the referred zoning ordinance change proposal to allow cannabis beyond IG zone.
Counselor, entertain a motion to take up eighteen, I mean nineteen and twenty as a package.
Yep, uh, motion's been made and seconded to take up items, suspend the rolls and take up items nineteen and twenty as a package. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, so, that was item nineteen, and twenty is, uh, an order, uh, that the city amend the zoning ordinance to require, require a special permit, uh, to granting permission for use in all residential districts. Um, and both have been given order, uh, recommended that the order be given leave to withdraw, Counselor Rivera?
Yes, so for, so for nineteen, uh, we were waiting on a response from, or a recommendation from the planning board, but to my understanding, as to what I learned that day, is that, um, it took too long, and they, the order kinda timed out after the public hearing. Um, that was quite unfortunate, and I'll just refile the order, I think, though, moving forward, i- it's important for us as a committee to kind of figure out how we're gonna work through, um, working in collaboration with, with other committees, um, especially the planning board, um, the planning board, 'cause sometimes, it will take them longer than ninety days to get back to us with, with a response. So if every, every time, it's gonna be longer than ninety days with a response, then when we do these public hearings, it ends up being somewhat of a waste of time. Um, so, uh, I'm more about effective and efficient governments, and, um, I think that we should, I mean, I'll talk to my fellow colleagues on that, and meet with the planning board as well, to try to find a resolution as to how best to approach this moving forward, 'cause if ninety days is, you're, you're, you're timed to actually, uh, attempt to, um, take up the order, um, and we're waiting on a response, then it's not to say, I don't wanna blame anyone with regards to that, I just wanna figure out how best to serve the people. So, um, yeah, that's why we gave that one leave to withdraw, I'll refile it, and we'll figure it out. The, 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 um, number twenty, it's similar with regards to the timing out piece, but it also is, um, another order that has, that is currently in committee, and still has to be addressed in public hearing, so this one, um, we gave it left to leave to withdraw, because, um, I'll be able to take it up soon, and when I do take it up, we'll, we'll tackle that order when it gets there. So for the time being, we gave that one leave to withdraw as well, and any questions for anyone?
Any other comments or questions, Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, just to support the chairman on what he's saying about nineteen, the, the law, um, allows you, they have a window that they're supposed to respond to, and if they don't comply with that, you can still move forward, so, I want you to know that, you know, don't feel like you're trapped by waiting for them forever. Normally, the two paths are walking parallel, traditionally, so that you don't come into where one is, the time is kicking in, but, once you move forward, they basically have a, not a particularly long window, that they have to basically make a decision and go forward, or you're just allowed to proceed...
Okay.
Without their recommendation in the future, just so you're aware of that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, 'cause you need to do what you need to do, and I totally agree with you, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vagan?
Thank you, I just wanna note on item twenty, that I had filed that order in June, but then someone else filed a similar order again in August, Counsel Grani, and his orders cur- currently in an open public hearing, which was continued until December eleventh, so, there can be further discussion on that matter, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Alright, so the motion was made and seconded to give leave to withdraw on items nineteen and twenty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moved. Um, item twenty-one, well, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Vagan, do I have your, do we have your permission to sign off on these ordinance, um...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty, oops. Item twenty was... I already did that, item twenty-one. Uh, the Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order that there be an, uh, transfer of thirty-two thousand dollars, um, from the, uh, audit professional accountant HPD, procurement assistant CPO, and treasurer administrative assistant, to, um, IT software license, um, the, it was, uh, the motions to receive, adopt, and, uh, pass the first reading.
Reading.
Counselor Devine?
Yep, this was, um, a transfer of thirty-two thou-, for thirty-two thousand to go into the IT software licenses. Um, during, when we were cutting, uh, the budget, uh, the city council cut thirty-two thousand, certain member of the city council, I should say, cut thirty-two thousand from the software license line, so that line is thirty-two thousand short, and from what is needed to pay our license fees, so it's, it's kind of, uh, pretty simple.
Okay, um, are there any other questions or comments, Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, just gonna point out, I did vote in favor of this, and the committee did support it, on the premise that while we did cut it to reduce the levy, these monies are coming from other where, other locations in the budget, so it is budget neutral, so that's why I thought it was, uh, a good thing to support. They're basically just shifting surpluses in these lines to here.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera?
Um, yeah, I think my only question was, and, and it's similar to, not to the Counselor Jordane, it's common, it's just, um, is that I see other accounts versus, so this software license is for the whole city or for HPD?
It's for IT department.
We ha-, we have an H-, IT department?
Yeah.
Okay, so for the whole city, alright, perfect then, so I was trying to figure out like, how, but that's perfect, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Let's raise a, a related point, uh, in sixty seconds or less, so at budget time, quite often, what Counselor Leahy would do, especially with the Law Department, is to make a significant cut, not with the, not to, uh, uh, hamstring them, but to make them come back at six months and tell us, wh- where are we, wh- wh- what is it that you need, and so, it, and it gives some flexibility. So when we have the budget hearing come June, i- it's not to cripple the city or cripple the department, or be unfair towards anyone, but it allows us the chance to really hear more about what the department's needs are, after six months, or for three months, or whatever it is, so, I, I, I hope people will, will take, when we come to the budget hearings, will, will take the votes in that spirit, it was not to be cruel, uh, wh- what we just found out is, this turned out to be a win, 'cause we, we, we made a cut, again, it was not to hurt the department, but it was understand a little bit better where we are from a budget perspective, once we're some, some months into the fiscal year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye. Motion to pass.
Any opposed? Okay.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Uh, motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you are voting to, uh, approve the transfer. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vagan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed it, thank you, uh, item twenty-two is the Committee on Finance, to whom, uh, a transfer be approved for three hundred thousand dollars, uh, from dispatch and patrolmen, uh, to overtime, uh, recommended that the order be adopted, Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading?
Uh, motion to pass the first reading, uh, give you, you can give your update.
The chief was in, or he was on Zoom, and this is to transfer, um, overtime bills, where sometimes there's two and three vacancies, resignations, there's six in the academy, and then four more will be sworn in in late November, early December, and, um, the question that's always asked, and I think it's Counselor Jordane that asks, it's a good question, will they be coming back again? And, uh, the question, answer was that it's on trend from last year, but there may be one more transfer before the end of fiscal twenty-twenty-five, and there's a couple of patrolmen that, uh, their salary is, uh, paid by grants.
Thank you, um, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I, I would just like to, uh, double down on what was said, not only on the, um, on item number twenty-one, but here we are again on item number twenty-two, as we come into the next budget cycle, we're, we're transferring a hundred fifty thousand from patrolmen. What was proposed back last year was to cut seventy thousand dollars from that line item, half of what's being transferred right now, and the reason the money's there is, for the same reason it's been, year after year after year, for the entire seven years that I've been on the council, and the two that I wasn't, nine years now, I've watched this, over budget, over budget, over budget, and they've never, ever filled it, and it's nothing short of a slush fund every year. Presented to us with good intention, people are in the academy, this, this, and this, but it never hits the full complement of officers, never, ever. There's always something that comes up, somebody flunked out of the academy, somebody dropped out, somebody failed, um, somebody else left unexpectedly, it's the same routine, and here we are again, uh, we, we didn't make a seventy thousand dollar cut, but now we've got a hundred fifty thousand surplus in this line item, and guess what? It's not the first time already this year, and watch, it's not the last time, we'll see it again either, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley?
So, so, y- you, you might ask the question, uh, after what Mike just said, so, so what do you do about it? Well, what you do about it is you make a hard vote in June to cut the budget, again, it's not being mean to anybody, it's not trying to hamstring a department, you might get some calls afterwards, but now what you've done is, you, you've given the mayor a lot more flexibility, sometimes the mayor doesn't even have, he puts in a budget, and while he might, might, might make a cut, he, in his heart of hearts, sometimes the mayor wants to make a deeper cut, but it's a certain favorite department, well, we don't really wanna do that, so when we propose a cut, we're not saying it's gone forever, we're simply saying, let's get some more room under the cap, you might have, actually, as it turns out, more free cash at the end of the year, look what Springfield has, sixty-something million dollars, whatever. So, y- if you, you might ask, you know, what's the recommendation, the recommendation is, we need to pay attention and work together kind of as a team at budget time, that's, that's really the recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Counselor Rivera?
I, the, I was, I was at the meeting, and I, and I asked a lot of the questions at the meeting, um, just, the only comment I would say is, um, with regards to this, uh, it's interesting to me that like, by now, they're almost more than half of where they were last year, they, like, they said it's trending the same, but technically, last year was like a million spent, and they said in the meeting, it was like seven hundred grand, almost-ish, a little, give or take, that's more than half of what was spent last year, and I think, in the conversation for next year's budget, hopefully, they come to us with an actual, real appropriation, what they need for overtime, instead of two hundred, I think, two hundred and fifty K they put, or three hundred fifty K they put in the bu- budget originally, because then, we're looking at a real number, instead of transferring in, transferring in from different departments, um, and, um, it's hard pressed for people to actually vote against police budgets, um, it's nice to say that, uh, I, I don't see a lot of people doing that on a regular basis here, but like, yes, um, that would be the best approach, is actually taking a stance, but I, I think it's us working in collaboration and making sure that we're not hurting them in certain areas if we're doing that, but I agree with a lot of what's been said, thank you.
Counselor Grani?
On the question, please?
Two steps ahead of me, so the motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, uh, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you are voting to approve the transfer. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-three is, uh, Committee on Finance, um, to whom is referred an order that the city council accept the provisions of the Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant Program, twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars, no match. Um, and, uh, the recommendation was that the order be adopted.
Motion to pass the first reading.
Motion to pass the first reading, under discussion.
Okay, this was a grant, and I just wanted to mention, Sergeant Zerhide has done a lot of these grants, and he's done a great job. Um, this grant was approved to pay Cataldo Ambulance to use to pay the fee for EMT's nine-one-one certified dispatchers. Another, um, grant by Sergeant Zerhide, and the contract with them, uh, is from October tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And this was awarded through the, um, State nine-one-one Department Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant Program from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, nine-one-one Department, and the amount is twenty-four five with no match. Uh, this grant is intended to support the costs associated with resources utilized for the nine-one-one requiring emergency medical dispatch.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Counsel Rivera?
Yeah, so that was a, uh, Patty, you guys did a, a great job there, and so did Sergeant Zerhide in presenting. I think what I learned in that presentation, um, this, this money is to pay Cataldo to do a service that our dispatchers are not trained to do.
Right.
That's my understanding, and that stood out to me as, um, an anomaly, I guess, or something. Uh, why are we not trained to do certain things, our dispatchers? Because we get certain grants to provide them training. But I, uh, I think that's a question I could follow up with the police department, but I'm assuming it's probably more about insurance things. But, um, that just stood out to me, and I kind of want to like, highlight that, because contracting out services for someone else to do dispatcher kind of work, um, just stood out to me, even though we had dispatchers. Thank you.
Counsel Jordan?
If, if it helps, I think the logic is that you would effectively have to train all of our dispatchers to this medical, like, first aid. So what it is, if there's someone that's calling in on one of these nine-one-one calls and they need like immediate first aid medical attention, they kick that call over to these, to these guys, to the trained professional. For us to hold on to those calls, all of our people would basically have to have their level of knowledge, and the view is that's way more expensive than it would be to kick it into their service, and they found a way to get a grant to pay for it all. So that's the theory behind why the city's doing it that way, and at the moment, it looks to be the most financially efficient way of doing it. And there's probably also a liability protection there too, because your folks aren't giving the advice their folks are.
Counsel Divine?
Yeah, and we'll see a little bit more in item number twenty-four as the costs and things like that.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to accept the grant. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kivner?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you have approved that grant. Thank you. Item twenty-four, um, is the Finance Committee, um, approving, uh, the provisions of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five State nine-one-one Department Training Grant Program, twelve thousand dollars, five hundred, twelve thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, no match. Uh, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Divine?
Uh, motion to pass the first reading.
Motion has been made to pass the first reading, under discussion.
Yep. This is a, another great grant that was given for the State one-one-nine Department Training Grant Program. Um, and it's going to run from October, uh, October tenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This is to pay the overtime that the dispatchers are required to take these classes. There's four classes, there's twelve dispatchers, at sixteen hours to be up to date. Classes are three hundred ninety-nine dollars, times four classes, times twelve dispatchers on their own time. Um, so that's why the grant is there. Uh, it's intended to improve and support our dispatcher's continuing education. The grant will cover the course fees for their sixteen hours of continued education and overtime costs associated with completing it outside their normal working hours.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept, uh, the grant. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kivner?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed it, thank you. Item twenty-five, uh, the Committee on Finance, that the city council accept the provisions of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Municipal Road Safety Program Grant, thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, no match. Um, recommended that the order be adopted. Counsel Divine?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Motion has been made to pass the first reading, under discussion.
Okay, I think a lot of people are going to be happy with this. We certainly were in committee. Um, it's a traffic enforcement grant. Uh, they're, they're going to have four-hour details between eight AM and ten PM all over the city, and they'll get a monthly report starting in December is the first month, and we've asked them to make sure that they give us the reports as they get them. Um, the committee, uh, wanted a lot less warnings to people and more ticketing. Uh, and the chief explained that that obviously is at the discretion of the officer. Um, but there's certainly no quotas, that's against the law. And, um, I also wanted to thank them for this grant as well. Um, and it'll encompass speeding, people with no insurance, no license, need to be ticketed. Uh, if they're ticketed for speeding, um, the, their insurance is going to go up, and unfortunately, that's a hard-learned lesson, but that's how you have to prevent this. And, um, the other thing I also wanted to, to say, let me go one more thing here. This is the, again, this is through the Executive Office of Public Safety, through the support of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in the amount of thirty-nine-six. This grant is intended to improve and support proactive traffic enforcement throughout the city. And I did just want to add one caveat that we have to also realize, we want these ticketed, we want speeders ticketed, we, we know there's a danger out there. We've all seen how people drive around the city. But I also want to be cognizant of the fact that the police officers have to go stop that car and see, and talk to that person, and that's not exactly the, it, it could be very dangerous. So I want us to keep that in mind as well, but I think this is a great grant, and, um, I think we're going to hopefully see a lot of enforcement.
Thank you, Counsel Bartley?
Couldn't agree more with the chair. I want you to know that I got pulled over for driving too slow. So, I just, I just, I just.
It gets worse.
And I got a, I got a warning. I did not get a ticket. But I will, I will say that I'm so grateful for this grant, but think about this man present, put it in context, what with the financial transfer we just had. We just transferred three hundred K for overtime. So now we got, you know, one-ninth of that for, uh, for a quality of life thing. I mean, just just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rivera?
Thank you.
I'm not kidding.
I, I, I want to echo the sentiment of my colleagues around the traffic and, and being like excited about the new approach, right? Or the grant funding to help us mitigate the, the traffic nuances, right? But I think for us, this is just a small step, right, in what we're looking for, for long-term. And I think, uh, I filed an order before around the traffic squad that is still in ordinance, that is still part of, um, our document. Um, I think in the charter ordinance, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. But if something like that is managed by a traffic squad, I think that it's more intentional, there's more teeth into it, and we'll be moving in a direction where they, that squad can come to us and report to us regularly, even without grant funding. Um, and this could start moving that in that direction, but I think for us, it's important to see that, that the progress happens, and this is some of that. So I appreciate that, and I kind of wanted to echo the sentiment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to pass. Motion to pass the second reading.
Uh, motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, did I just get ahead of myself? The clerk will call the roll. Sorry.
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kivner?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith? Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, you've passed it. I just want to say, when I go twenty-five, which is the citywide speed limit, um, I get passed a lot by people, so. Yeah, I hope you get tickets. Okay. Um, item twenty-six is, uh, do you want to take these, twenty-six?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven together, please.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take, um, items twenty-six and twenty-seven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-six is, uh, the Committee on Finance, um, was referred an order from the Holyoke Retirement Board, the PARAC Investment Report twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-seven was also from the retirement board. It's the annual statement of the financial condition of the Holyoke Retirement Board. Both of these orders, um, are recommended that they have been complied with. Counsel Divine?
Yes, um, the chairman of the retirement board was on Zoom, and we had a good discussion about, um, the, uh, valuation summary and the, uh, I'll read this too. Um, of all the cities in, in the state of Massachusetts, um, the return in twenty twenty-three was eight-point-seven-one percent. The five-year report, pr- return was ten-point-four-seven percent. The ten-year return was eight-point-thirty-three, the thirty-nine-year return is nine-point-thirty-one percent. And the funded ratio on one-twenty, on January first, twenty twenty-two was seventy-six-eighty. But now that's gone up to five points, eighty-one forty-nine percent from the previous year. And, uh, according to, uh, Mr. Delude, we're going up seven percent each year, and that the retirement fund is in good shape, and we should be fully funded by twenty thirty-two. Um, what he also said was that we are in the seventy-five percent, uh, percentile for state retirement boards. And this year, uh, I believe it was January, July first, the, um, retirees from, uh, at fifteen thousand received a COLA of three percent, and that gave them an extra thirty-seven fifty in their retirement check.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counsel Greeney?
Just quickly, I'm not a mathematician, but those sound like really good numbers.
I'm sorry, what?
Those sound like very good numbers.
Yeah.
Counsel Jordan?
Yeah, I just wanted to also echo what the chairman said. I would, I would just, uh, to put a fine point on it, Springfield, on the other hand, their numbers were mentioned earlier, they're only thirty-five percent funded, okay? Thirty-five, we're eighty-one. So, good for Holyoke. This is something, you know, we do take some knocks for different things that we may not be doing perfect. This is something we're really doing a really good job on, and it's something that as a city, we've kind of rallied around in the budgets to get this done, because for those of you who will be on the council in twenty thirty-two, which isn't that far away, you know, I know when Counsel Rivera is serving in his whatever term, uh, ten, term at that point, he's still the chairman over there, maybe president, I'll tell, you're going to have this nice windfall of money.
My beard is already gray.
I, I won't be here, I won't be here. But I'll, I'll just tell you that in those glorious eight years from now, we'll only have to do the funding of our regular appropriation. All this extra that we've had to add on year after year, that's going to be a real boon for the city of Holyoke, and there'll be a payoff. Now, inevitably, there'll be other things, uh, you know, the other medical benefits, the other things that are out there. Um, I'm sure there'll be things for the future, but this one will be a huge coup for Holyoke, so, uh, good job, Holyoke. You know, we're, we're doing right by the, the taxpayers on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counsel Greeney and then Counsel Sullivan.
Just quickly, I'll be looking forward to my new colleagues in twenty thirty-two and.
Oh my gosh. Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, uh, the, we, we've got one of the best performing retirement boards in, in this state, alright? And I believe when I first came on the council, the, the number, the, the year that was out there for fully funded was probably four or five years further distant. Given this track, uh, it could be even sooner than that. And, uh, it, it is a tremendous job that they, they have done. That's all I want to say.
Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, and, yeah, I, so we've had some pretty good stewardship there with Cheryl and Danny before that, and then now Tony, so, um, having Todd be on the board, uh, with Todd's acumen relative to, uh, uh, taxes and, uh, financial advising, um, and his skills, I mean, that's, that's a pretty big win, uh, having that as well. I would only just say that if I'm here in twenty thirty-two, it would be my, uh, twelfth, twelfth term, and I would be not even halfway to what Counsel McGivern did. So there you, there you go.
Oh, what a thought. I will not be here. Love y'all, but I'm, no, I'm good. Jeffrey will hold down the fort for us. Uh, alright, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, so, uh, on the motion that the orders have been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Uh, Madam Chair, can we take twenty-eight and thirty together as a package, please?
Twenty-eight and thirty, sure. Uh, motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items twenty-eight and thirty together as a package. Twenty-eight, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, twenty-eight is, and tw- and thirty are filed by Counsel Bartley. Uh, twenty-eight is that we invite, um, Andrew Morehouse, who's the executive director of the Western Mass Food Bank, to a future DGR meeting. And thirty is, uh, from Counsel Bartley, um, that we invite, uh, Tara Jacobs, our governor's counselor representative, District Eight, to a future DGR meeting.
So the motion is to, uh, receiver, refer to DGR.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer, under discussion?
Yeah, just through the chair to the chair. Uh, I did speak already with Mr. Morehouse, he's good to go. So we just got to get a date for him, and I did speak with, uh, Governor Counselor Jacobs at a training on Friday, and she's good to go. Uh, she would very much like to come to City Hall as, so long as the meeting's on a Monday. So I said, I'll work with the chair, and we'll try to make that happen. So both were very much, um, looking forward to coming and speaking about their organizations to us.
Great. So motion's been made and seconded to refer to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Item twenty-nine, filed by Counsel Bartley, um, that the city, uh, consider installation of a flashing crosswalk signal as it, um, two crosswalks proximate to Metcalf, refer to the mayor, DPW, city engineer, receiver, and joint committee.
Yeah, the, the main motion is to reserve, re- refer to ordinance, and Counsel Vacan, supposed to be, I know Counsel Vacan signed on to this, uh, when I filed it, but she's been on here now, so, uh, uh, because that, this, this cuts right across wards three and five, and I know she's supportive of it. So the, the main motion is, is to send it to ordinance and then, uh, copies to everybody else.
Okay, so send to ordinance, um, with copies to, uh, the mayor, DPW, engineer, receiver, and joint committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, um, twenty, nope, thirty, nope.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Filed by Counselors Divine and McGrath Smith, um, order that the city forester, DPW director, and purchasing director come into finance to discuss the urban forestry grant.
Received and sent to finance?
Send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, item, we did thirty-two. That was received. Um, item thirty-three is filed by Counsel Divine, ordered that the city council reconsider our vote to appoint the city treasurer rather than have it be an elected position, and further take the necessary steps to combine the treasurer and tax collector positions into one office.
President, if I might, um, indulge the committee to, uh, look over this. I, I did some thinking after, uh, Counsel Anderson Burgos. Thought it would not be a good idea to have a special election and the more I thought about it and remembered days when, um. There were people that didn't go to the polls for whatever reason. And I asked the clerk to give me some information just about what it costs for an election. Thirteen thousand dollars for poll workers and movers, a hundred and fifty dollars to rent a U-Haul. Two hundred and twenty-five for rental at Saint Paul's. Forty-five hundred for programming, election cards and printing ballot and two, two thousand for overtime. Also, the, um, if people want a mail-in ballot, the balance, the balance. Ballots have to go out in the mail. And my concern is that it's a January eighth, twenty-eighth election. I don't know how we're gonna spread the word. Um, and my sense is also that. The city council would like the treasurer to be appointed rather than elected. So if you go and have an, an election and it comes out where the, and I'm gonna be facetious that. The twenty people that went to each ward to vote, um, decided to have it elected. Then we're back to square one where we prefer to have it as a appointed position. And I also think that, um, there, there's just not gonna be enough interest. We don't have a daily newspaper. We don't have, this is in January. We don't, and it gets dark very early. We don't know if we're gonna have a snowstorm or not. Uh, it's certainly cold out. And so what I also looked into was, um, the percentage that people actually turn out to vote. The best elections are always the presidential elections. Anywhere from forty-nine percent and maybe forty-five to forty-nine percent. If you look at, uh, say a municipal election, election November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. There was no mayor's race and there's only seventeen percent of the people showed up to vote. If you look at in twenty-twenty-one, the preliminary municipal election. And the only thing on the ballot was the mayor's race and there's only nineteen percent that showed up. And I would assume that was definitely in the newspaper. I have to assume that the mayor and anybody else running for mayor was sending out information to the voters. So that they know that this was coming up. So that's why I feel that. It, it's, sometimes we just, that's our duty. Our duty is to do what we feel is best. That's why we were elected. And I think it's best that we save the, um, voters of, of the city some money. Here's one state senator, May nineteenth, twenty-twenty, eight percent showed up to vote. So if they're gonna show up for a state senator, eight percent, I don't see where they're gonna show up for this. So that's my theory.
Okay.
And I'm sticking to it.
Okay, um, I have, uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos and then Counselor Bacon.
I, I mean, I'll, I'll be brief. There's, you know, my, my stance on it when this first came up. There's nothing up my sleeve. I'm not trying to take any power away from voters or anything like that. I, I'm thinking simply that we were put in a position of power. Because the voters believe in us and that we would never intentionally. This body would never intentionally take the voice, voice away from voters. Where it's not, that's not what this is about. This is trying to do what we think is best for the city as a whole. Not wait, not about taking the power away from them, but. Not wasting, first of all, a lot of money and resources to get this done. We are capable of doing that. There, I believe there's an, there's even an order in ordinance. That would help us get there to make that decision. We would just have to ask the state. So I, I'm just simply stating that there, there's nothing up my sleeve, nothing crazy. It's just. Me trying to make the best of it for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President. So I am speaking out in strong opposition to this second order to reconsider our vote. Initially, a majority of the council had voted to put this on the November ballot. We had a forty-eight percent turnout. And our own mayor had argued that the CPA question should be on this ballot because of a higher turnout. And, uh, giving the ability of the voters to speak their will to us through their votes. We saw sixty-four, sixty-five percent of the voters vote to reduce the CPA surtax. This treasurer's vote, in my mind, is very similar. It was a position created by the voters. And if we had wanted to have a good turnout for this vote, we would have left it on the presidential ballot. But we did give consideration to the request by our clerk. Who had shared with us the administrative difficulties. And as a result of that consideration. Is why we now have, as I understand it, the home rule petition has already been filed by Rep Duffy. To hold this election as we voted and agreed to on January twenty-eighth. This date and this special election have been made known to the public. And I think for us to turn around and go against our vote. After all of the discussion and debate about having the citizens vote on CPA. Is quite frankly, doing a disservice to the people we represent. Yes, they do elect us to make decisions for them, but they don't elect us to make every decision for them. And I think it's our job to make sure that people are informed about what this vote is. And how it can affect the future operation of our city. And, um, our mayor's been a very able communicator on various matters. And so I think the horse is out of the gate on this and it's already up to the state. And I think we just need to let it go to the ballot as we have previously voted now twice. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Rivera and then Counselor Greenie.
For clarification, wasn't the horse already out of the gate on the last vote? And we were able to adjust it now? Were we? Yes or no? Like, we were able to change from November to January, right?
If I may, through the chair, through the president?
Sure.
So, in the first instance, by the time the order was taken up in charter and rules. Rep Duffy indicated to us she had already held it back. And the date and the timeline for it then to be filed had been exceeded. Without the knowledge of the city council. So by the time we took that order up in charter and rules. We did not any longer have the opportunity to put it on the November ballot. Through no action of the city council. Thank you.
So it was never a dumb deal to do it in November in the first place?
Well.
It had been held back and so then the time ran up.
You gotta get approved in Boston.
Yeah.
So it's a yes or no? It was approved for November or it wasn't? Cause it's.
It was not approved for November.
That's it, just a quick simple yes or no. Not approved for November.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Everyone's talking and, uh, Counselor Rivera has the floor. So your question is, did it get approved for November? No.
Thank you. That's all it was. The extra jargon kind of is not necessarily.
So, and.
That was just a question?
Okay. I didn't, did you have a, did I, was there a second one that I?
I had follow-ups.
Okay.
Uh, so I guess for me is, there's a lot of confusion around the language. In general, when it comes down to voting and I speak for my own experience when I walked into the voting booth and there's. Experience to my eighteen-year-old or nineteen-year-old daughter who also told me she voted for something that she didn't know what she was voting for because the questions were crazy. It was crazy. So I don't think this was a fair analysis this time around to talk about how. Certain questions and things went down for this go-around. And I think this kind of speaks to. What Counselor Devine is kind of speaking to, to have a vote in January. When, I'm gonna tell you the truth, a lot of people are not gonna go vote that day. No matter who goes out there to put out whatever information, because to them it might not be important to vote on just one thing. But if we wanna go ahead and spend the money and we wanna go ahead and proceed further and go ahead and do this. That's great. Uh, like, I, I, I'm with it, but I'm just, I wanted to kind of point out, eh, the facts in a sense. With regards to what's gonna, like, what are we doing in January? Do we really expect more of, more than a turnout of eight percent? Are we really doing this or is this another performative action that we're doing just to say we're kind of do it to go through the process? Cause I would try and, I would, I would rather not do that. Um, but thank you.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Greenie?
My opinion that people have a right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, again, I'm, I appreciate the spirit that this is offered and I know it's, it's. You know, under the premise of let's just make things more efficient. The general tenor of the room is that we want to just have this be appointed and I am in that camp. I think it should be an appointed treasurer. Of course, there's a lot of open pieces about combining positions, CFO, this, what positions will. There's so many still open questions, but this is one of the steps we need to, to do some restructuring. Having said that. Just because the thirteen of us are on board doesn't mean necessarily that the public is on board, okay? This is their government. We are simply the servants, alright? And when you're talking about taking their powers away, for example, we have an elected mayor. We have an elected clerk. We have an elected treasurer, alright? We are saying in our prior vote that. The, the public voted in. We didn't, that just didn't fall out of the sky that we have an elected treasurer. The public of Holyoke voted to have an elected treasurer. For us to turn around and say, we're gonna take away their right to vote on the treasurer after they voted it in. Should come from them. This is, this is them exerting their authority over the charter. They adopted this charter. And, and by the, oh, by the way, we had a referendum where this question came up in two thousand and eleven. And the public voted, among other things, to keep it as is with an elected treasurer. That's not that far away. Nevertheless, if we were to say, you know what, it would be more efficient to have an appointed clerk. Versus like Springfield has an appointed city clerk. The point is, we would not, I would not vote to do that unilaterally. Without the public, because the public voted in an elected clerk, an elected mayor. Like, you could argue, well, shouldn't maybe we just have a city manager? Why do we even have a mayor? You know, we could get somebody way more, you know, this, 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 this and this. And the mayor even makes kind of those points to say, you know, I don't have all these skill sets. You could probably hire somebody that has this, this and this skill set. Okay, but if we were to get rid of mayor as an elected office, we would need the public to weigh in on it. Not the thirteen of us just say, well, you know, the thirteen of us unanimously think it's a great idea, so let's just do that on our own. There's just certain things you don't do and that's one of them, right? Cause you're taking power away from the public, whether it's with the best of intentions or otherwise. So. All of this has been debated for the last year and a half plus. We finally had arrived on House Bill five oh six two. And we reconsidered our vote a few weeks ago, um, or a month or so ago. And with the consultation of Rep Duffy, we adopted House Bill five oh six two and it says in it, among other things. That fi- hi- five oh six two does not pass unless the public votes to approve it. So we would have to repeal House Bill five oh six two. And go through a whole nother process again by doing this. So this is going to delay things tremendously. I would never vote to take away the public's power in this, no more than I would do it for mayor or for clerk. It just, to me. It doesn't feel right, even if I think it's a good idea. It, it, it sets a terrible precedent. And, um, and I'm sure there's people that could say, hey, you know, we could get a hell of a lot smarter people than the thirteen of us. If we just appointed them, right? And we put out resumes instead of having elections for council. And that's probably true, right? So the point is, this is, this is why we got where we got. And I, I would point out. We should stay with this approach. Um, we accommodated the ba- the, uh, voting change. The council did pass to put it on the November ballot. The legislature held it back, okay? And said, do you really wanna do that? And the answer was, based on the advice we had getting, received, not a good idea to have it on November. So the decision was push it to January. So now we've pushed it to January and then we're gonna turn around and say. Whoa, not enough people are gonna show up in January. So, I mean, we can't have it both ways, right? Uh, and now we're saying, well, because it's now in January, which we just discussed a month ago. That it was gonna be in January, so it wouldn't be on the presidential. We're now saying that's the argument to not even have an election at all. So that, we're like speaking out of two sides of our mouth on that. So. This is democracy in action. It's not pretty. It costs thirty thousand dollars. Uh, no question about it, uh, to do it, but is the public's right to have powers that they have in the charter worth thirty thousand dollars? I would, I would, I would suggest their power is worth thirty thousand dollars. So, um, that, that's where I come down on it.
Thank you. Um, so I have Counselor Bartley, McGrath Smith, Governor Anderson Burgos, and I also just want to remind everyone. You know, just.
I'm close.
Yeah. Uh, well, I'm like about to, like, s- yeah, I.
Well.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let, I will let counselors Bartley, McGrath Smith, Governor and Anderson Burgos, uh, weigh in since they haven't. Or, and Counselor Sullivan, um, but I'm just hoping folks can stay brief and if we are gonna have a really long committee meeting. In full council, then I wish we would just have it in committee. So, um, Counselor Bartley?
Uh, I'll be brief. Um, I, first of all, I agree with everything that's been said, especially Counselor Devine. I, I, I can't emphasize enough how every point the counselor made is absolutely correct. I would only say to the president, if you read the order before us and then if you look at Rule eight H. Look, a vote can be reconsidered in the same session, but not afterwards. I mean. How much more clear do you want it to make? You can't do it this way. You can't reconsider, you cannot reconsider the action at a prior meeting. Can't be done. Procedurally impossible. So I'm not sure what we're doing here.
I, we actually don't have a motion even on the, at all.
And just one other small point. I don't wanna have a vote in January. I think that's the most important point that counselor made. I don't even know why I supported it, but I, I, I wish we could move it. I wish we could move it, uh, but we talked about this round and round to get ahead of it for, for, for next fall. That, that's why we did it this way. And I know why, but I, I, look, I, I think, I think we're stuck. And, um, I, I think we have to go on with the vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath Smith.
I've been thinking a lot about how to get the word out to the public because I hear two concerns. One is the financial cost of it.
Excuse me.
And I agree, it's unfortunate that it will cost thirty thousand to do it. Um, but I also believe that paying that money protects the voter's right to have a say in it. But I also hear this other concern around vo- l- low voter turnout and the voters not understanding why we're asking them to come out for the special election. Or even understanding what's at stake in it. I've heard from many voters in the last election, they were really confused by several of the ballot questions, including some of the state ones, also, you know, one of ours. And I do think that simplistic language is really important. I understand that often we're trying to follow the city solicitor's advice and the advice that we're getting legally around what language is allowed. That language does not often work for people. They look at it and they have no idea what it means or what the ramifications are. Um, the state sends the, the ballot questions booklet out. That actually has some common sense language in it and it's very clear to people, uh, is a yes vote is this and a no vote is that. And they have an organization stand for that side and they write a very brief letter arguing the so- the points. And I've thought about the fact that we're asking the public to come forward for this special election. But it's an awkward thing because the city council is effectively asking them to do it. But also, we don't have a campaign budget. And we need one. Because if this was a campaign issue, there'd be lawn signs. There would be, you know, other organizations weighing in, making sure the public is aware of what the sides are and which, which side they should vote for. And we're unenvi- unenviably being put in that position without any source of funding. So one of the things that I started to work on is an open letter from council. Um, I was gonna put in a motion for us to look at it at the next meeting. And either, uh, it can be sent to committee or folks, uh, can, can look at it and come with their suggestions ready to go so we can move it faster. Um, but one of my thoughts is that it makes sense for us to have an open letter, uh, that the council. But one of my thoughts is that it makes sense for us to have an open letter that the council agrees to, saying, "This is why we're asking you to do this." So that we can then share that widely with the Gazette, the Sun, the Reminder, the Republican, and get it out through the news. We have to ask the mayor, do your part. If you want this to happen too, get, you know, help us, connect news to us to news organizations. We do have to get the word out that this election is happening in January. And we can't just get people there. We have to help them understand what the special election is about and what the stakes are and why we're asking them. Because this is not with, neutral. The CPA question was neutral. This is not. This is councils asking you to do this along with the support of the mayor and here's why. We have to make that case to the, the people or no. We, you know, we can't even say that we've done our part to make this happen. I really hope we don't put $30,000 on the line and then don't do any of the legwork required to get the result that we're asking the people for. That would be a big waste of our time and their money. Thank you.
Counselor Governor?
I'm outside.
Okay. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
You know, I, I find it interesting when counselors say that we're taking power away from the public. And I'm going to go back to when the question whether we should have two schools, and I'm only using this as an example, should go on the ballot. And the amount of constituents who've reached out to me then saying, "I want to see this on the ballot," also constituents reaching out saying, "I don't want to see it on the ballot." And then I remember the stances that the members of this body then were taking, which was, it was a close, it almost didn't make it to the ballot. Those counselors then were trying to take that power that we're talking about today away from the people of this community. So I find it interesting when these words are thrown out there, "They're taking your power away." Well, they tried to do that when, when the two schools were coming up. But you know what the difference is now? Is that I haven't received one email about anybody saying, "Oh, my God, don't you take the power away from me for the Treasurer's Department? Don't take that power away from me." Not one email, not one. And actually, I've spoken to some constituents, "Hey, do you know what the Treasurer's Department..." They don't have a clue. I don't know what the Treasurer's Department does. So, this power that we talk about, we should always be talking about it then, right? With everything we vote on, every single thing. Again, listen, I know how this is all gonna turn out. I don't want you to think I'm trying to even take away power from people. What I'm actually trying to do is save $30,000. Because a lot of, a few of you in here is like, "We're taxpayers' money. We're wasting taxpayers' money. We're wa, we're, we're wasting taxpayers..." But this is wasting taxpayers' money. It's as, it's simple as that. It's not about taking power away. It's trying to find a more efficient, efficient way. If we're gonna talk about saving money, this was it. It was as simple as that. But we made it to this and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you. $30,000 is not a waste of money at all. The continuous delay is costing this city our inability to set sewer rates, certify free cash, set a tax rate, all the other things that go along with it that we've seen year after year after year, right? We need a certified, qualified professional in that slot to supply not only us but the mayor, right? With the financial information we need to make timely decisions. Those are the decisions that are hurting the taxpayers. Not $30,000, but millions and millions and millions that go to waste. We need somebody with a managerial accounting background. The financial harm being done to this city by not getting the timely information we need from a professional department head is what is hurting us. Not $30,000. It's not about the right of taking away the people's vote. It's about bringing us into a modern future and an efficient government.
Thank you. Counselor Devine and then...
Just real quick, another thing I forgot, and I know it's not gonna change anybody's mind, but since it's gonna begin in 2025, the Clerk's Office has to receive applications for mail-in ballots and they have to start accepting them for 2025. And every time they mail out a ballot, it's a dollar per ballot. Again, I know it's not gonna change your mind, I just want to keep the facts out there. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. So there wasn't actually a motion at all, so I can't really do anything right now. What? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bacon, I just saw your hand up.
Madam President, I wanted to offer a motion. And while I appreciate the concerns that are expressed by the maker of the order, it's just very clear in our rules that we cannot reconsider the vote outside of the meeting in which we took the vote. So I respectfully make a motion that we give this leave to withdraw.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to give this order a leave to withdraw. Any...
Can I amend that to send it to committee?
Okay.
DGR.
So...
Would that be the committee?
I think Charter and Rules.
Charter and Rules is where we discussed it.
That's where it was last, yeah.
Thanks.
Was that a second? Okay, well...
That's the motion before us, the second one, yeah.
That's the second one?
That's the motion before.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Madam President?
Uh, yep.
I just have a, a point of information, a question.
Sure.
By sending this to committee, are we in any way delaying the clerk from proceeding with the vote on January 28?
No. That, all of that information, everything that we needed to do has already been done.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Greeney?
I just don't understand why we're dragging our feet on this.
Well, it will be referred to committee and then it can be discussed. We're done discussing this tonight.
It's been discussed and discussed and discussed.
Okay, well, it's gonna be referred to committee and the, the maker of the order has that right. Thank you. So, we will refer this to DGR. And, all those in favor?
Charter and Rules, Madam.
I'm so sorry, Charter and Rules.
You're good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Great. Well, it's referred there. We are so close, y'all. We got ten.
There you go.
And if you pull any fast ones on me between now and then...
No fast ones.
Thank you. Item thirty-four.
Can we take thirty-four and thirty-five up together?
I would love nothing more. Item, motion's been made to suspend the rules and take up items thirty-four and thirty-five together as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me. Item thirty-four is a transfer of $7,150.42 from captain, lieutenants, and firefighters to injured on duty. And for everyone's awareness, that represents three firefighters. And item thirty-five is a, a transfer request of $22,957.48. And that is from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty and that represents nine officers.
Motion?
To pass the...
Pass the first reading.
Okay, motion to pass the first reading. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading and approve the transfer.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve these transfers. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Governor?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Runbladie?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. That, you've passed it. Do you want to take thirty-six and thirty-seven as a package?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take items thirty-six and thirty-seven together as a package.
Send to Finance?
And send to Finance. So thirty-six is a transfer request of $49,915 from Capitol Stabilization to the Library, R and M Public Library. And then thirty-seven is a transfer request of $29,152 from OPED Administrative Assistant to OPED Licensing Agent. Refer to Finance?
Yes, and Madam President, I'm gonna, on thirty-six, I'm also gonna invite somebody from the library board.
Okay, great. So send to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item thirty-eight was filed by Counselor Governor with community support, order that speed trailers be moved regularly to collect speed data from rotating locations throughout the city. Where would you like that sent? To Public Safety and a copy to HPD. All right, so send to Public Safety with a copy to the Police Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do you want to take thirty-nine and forty as a package?
Sure.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion to take thirty-nine and forty as a package. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So thirty-nine and forty were both filed by Counselor Governor. They're for the sale of two different properties, declared surplus, and sold to...
Motion to send both to DGR?
Send both to DGR. One is for 133 Pine Street and one is for a parcel on Old Rock Valley Road. Send to DGR? Counselor Bartley?
No, I'm good. I just, I just when I see something, this property was originally sold via, via auction but due to an error in the auction process, can, can we just get an ever-so-brief explanation as to what happened?
In committee?
In, in committee?
Sure.
Yes.
Of course.
So, I don't know who, who would answer?
Maybe the, we can send a copy to the Treasurer, the Mayor?
Yeah.
Your successors.
Perfect. Yeah, just somebody who ran, who ran the auction. Usually it's Treasurer's Department.
Okay, so we'll send a copy to the Treasurer and...
Just ask you for an explanation.
For which one?
Okay.
For which number?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, Brenna.
All right, send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Forty-one was filed by Counselors Jordane and McGrath Smith that the City Forester provide a City Council with a list as soon as possible of the 100 most dangerous trees in the city. Where'd you like?
Receive the 100 most dangerous list, very important. Seriously, it is actually really important because of this situation that we have going on with these. We'd like to have this if my co-filer agrees. Receive, adopt, send to the City Forester, the DPW Superintendent, and the Mayor, please.
Okay.
And get a response by?
And the Board of Public Works, yes.
Get a response by Winkleveld.
We're requesting that the expectation that we would get this list...
It said three months in your order.
Well, we, it's not that we would get the response. Let's put it, let, just to be clear, please respond within 30 days. But this is asking for them to tell us what they can do in-house within the next three months and then anything they can't handle, what do they need to put for a contractor? And then we need to put the money together to go get that done.
Okay. Counselor Rivera?
Just, I've filed something like this before in the past. So I'd be interested...
Would you like to be?
Yes, please add me on.
Adding Counselor Israel Rivera, please.
Be interested to see what the answer's gonna be this time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for joining us.
Madam Chair, you do realize that clock, that clock is fast.
We'll clock.
All the more reason to get to this last order, y'all. Come on, I hope so. Come on.
Is that right?
Stop slowing this down. All right, so you wanted this...
It's going to end somewhere else. We have four, receive and adopt.
Receive and adopt and the Forester, DPW...
Board Commissioners, the Superintendent, and the Mayor, and adding Counselor Rivera